Hello everyone, good evening. Good to see you all here today. I'm Pastor Athena, one of the pastors here at Christ the King Lutheran Church in Cary, North Carolina. We welcome you and we appreciate your attendance tonight for this important event. We are honored to host this forum under the leadership of our church's Strengthening Democracy Team and the League of Women Voters of Wake County. We know that a strong and a just democracy is the cornerstone of our society, and more important now than ever. So, thank you for taking part in our democratic process and helping to preserve its integrity and merit. A few logistical matters tonight. We have restrooms right outside the door and to the left. If you would prefer a single-stall restroom that is gender-inclusive, we have those on the other side of the building and you can ask an usher to help you find it. There's also a coffee bar in the Narthex right out there, and you're welcome to enjoy a coffee or a tea in this space. Thank you to our candidates for making the time to be here tonight. Thank you for our Strengthening Democracy Team and the League of Women Voters of Wake County for organizing this event. Thank you for our facilities, crew, and our tech team. And thank you all for attending and for prioritizing local elections. And once again, welcome. I'll now turn it over to Gaye Williams.
Thank you Reverend Athena. My name is Gaye Williams and I serve as the President of the League of Women Voters of Wake County. I'm really excited to see you all here tonight and to see all of the Town Council candidates onstage. We have a lot of ground to cover, so we'll go ahead and get started. Before we begin, I want to draw your attention to the blank cards you should have received when you came in tonight. If you have a question that you would like asked of the candidates, please write it on that card and hand it to one of our greeters who are at the doors in the rear. And we will have an opportunity to ask those questions at the end. We do ask that you hold your applause and so that we are able to hear all of the candidates' responses and so that we complete the forum in the time allotted. So, thank you for that. With the questions that you turn in, they may be repetitive questions we've asked or they may be repetitive with each other, so we may merge questions of a particular theme or we may summarize questions if they are very long. So, if your question is asked and it's not exactly the same wording, please understand that. We do ask that you address your questions to a district or to the at-large candidates rather than to specific candidates. If you've already turned one in, address to a specific candidate. We will generalize it to the district, the appropriate district. Thank you to Christ the King Lutheran Church and Associate Pastor Athena Thomasin Bless for hosting tonight's event and recording it. The recording will be made available on YouTube as soon as possible after tonight. I want to also thank a few other specific members, including Candace Blackley, who's both a member of the church and of LWV Wake, for representing the church and all the efforts coordinating with the League. Also to John Fleming, who is here tonight, who is also a member of the church and of LWV Wake, who is one of our timekeepers this evening. And other League members, Robin Hammond, Jean Ford, Annette Green, Debbie Moose, Cheryl Tung, Sandy Hutchinson, Suzanne Botts, Helen Zimmerman, and many others who have worked to make this event happen for you. Thank you so much to the candidates who are here tonight and are willing to step forward to serve in important duties as members of the Cary Town Council. We recognize that serving as a member of the Town Council takes considerable time and energy and a commitment. This also means often sacrificing other opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, appreciate your willingness to share about your vision for the town of Cary this evening. Most of all, thank you to all of you for being here. You are those who care about the town of Cary and its future, and you are here because you understand that civic engagement is key to protecting your freedoms. Thank you for being here this evening. The League of Women Voters of Wake County was established in 1920, just prior to passage of the 19th Amendment, when women won the right to vote. For 105 years, the League has worked to carry out a mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. As a grassroots, nonpartisan organization, we encourage informed and active participation in government. We help citizens increase their understanding of major public policy issues, and we work to influence policy through education and advocacy. As is the case with tonight's cosponsoring organizations, the League of Women Voters does not endorse or oppose candidates or parties. So, just a few reminders. The last day for voter registration prior to early voting is tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. So, if you are not yet registered and you cannot go to early voting, please be sure you register tomorrow by 5:00 p.m. You can register during early voting, and that will start at the Cary location on October 25th and ends on November 1st. If you did not receive one, we have flyers that give you all the details about early voting. And now I'd like to introduce you and thank our cosponsors who have helped pull tonight's event together. You have already met a representative from Christ the King Church, and we've invited these folks to say just a few words about their organizations. First, we'll hear from the representative from NAACP Raleigh Apex Branch, Reverend Nell S. Hinton. Reverend Hinton serves as the Second Vice President of NAACP Raleigh Apex Branch. Nell has been an active member with various ministries in her church, Bethlehem Baptist Church in Raleigh, as well as Meals on Wheels of Wake County through the Raleigh Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and other organizations since moving to Raleigh in 1984. She has been active with the NAACP Raleigh Apex Branch since 2020 and is very honored to serve as Second Vice President of this branch since June of this year. Nell is a proud resident of Raleigh, where she has lived with her family for 41 years. Reverend Hinton will be followed by Helen Galais, the representative from El Pueblo. Helen serves as the Policy and Engagement Organizer at El Pueblo, where she focuses on strengthening community leadership and supporting civic participation across North Carolina. Last but not least is Abi Ranganathan, the representative from North Carolina Asian Americans Together, or NCAAT. Abi serves as the Director of Engagement at NCAP, where she leads statewide civic engagement, voter education, and community organizing efforts. A proud Cary resident, Abi has been deeply involved in building power and participation among AAPI communities around North Carolina. Please welcome our cosponsors.
Thank you Gaye. Good evening. It is indeed a pleasure to be with you tonight for this very important event. As stated, I am Reverend Nell S. Hinton, the Second Vice President of the NAACP Raleigh Apex Branch, number 5436. I'm honored to stand in, in the absence of our President, who is President Kelly Wilhelm. She had another engagement this evening, and she's very sorry that she can't be here. The NAACP Raleigh Apex Branch is indeed honored to cosponsor tonight's forum along with the League of Women Voters and other organizations. Founded in 1909, in response to the ongoing violence against black people around the country, the NAACP, which is National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, is the largest and most preeminent civil rights organization in the nation. We have over 2,200 units and branches across this nation and along with well over 2 million activists. Our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. The Raleigh Apex Branch is on the front line in the communities of Apex, Cary, Fuquay Varina, Garner, Holly Springs, Morrisville, Raleigh, and other areas in Wake County. We're busy. Our branch of the NAACP began in 1917. This branch is one of the first in North Carolina, and we have been involved in the national NAACP's longstanding mission to secure civil rights and equality for minority group citizens. We will continue the fight until... Of course, voting rights and engagement is one of the preeminent thrusts of the NAACP through voter registration drives, through Get Out the Vote efforts, through voter education, and anything else we can do to ensure that every citizen has the ability to vote. Therefore, we are truly glad and honored to work in conjunction with the League of Women Voters and these other organizations because we want to ensure, to ensure that all citizens of the United States of America have the right to vote. We would love for you to join us in this effort. We have a membership chairman here, Kathel Brown. Our table is out there. She'll welcome you right into the NAACP. And we're also very thankful for the two young men that you saw walking around. They are two of the youth members, of the youth branch of the Raleigh NAACP, and they're here volunteering tonight. Serving is what we do. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And thank you for inviting us to be a part of this, cosponsoring this forum. Much success to all of you.
Hi everyone, good evening. My name is Helen Galais. I am part of El Pueblo. El Pueblo is a local, nonpartisan nonprofit that has been serving the Latin and immigrant community here in Wake County for about 30 years or so, and we've been providing resources statewide, such as political education and voter guides. Our work is grounded in organizing, direct action, advocacy, and leadership development to make sure that our communities have both immediate support and a long-term voice in the decisions that affect their lives. We're committed to empowering our communities, sharing information, and creating opportunities for people to lead and organize together. Thank you all for being here today, and thank you for allowing us a space to be here with you all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abi Ranganathan. I'm from North Carolina Asian Americans Together, and thank you so much for being here. We're a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization dedicated to building power in North Carolina for the Asian-American community through civic engagement, leadership development, and political participation. Right now, our community is growing fast. Between 2010 to 2020, we've grown 86% more than the state average. Here in Cary alone, we've grown 20%, and we're 20% of the voting bloc in Cary. We are not just passing through, we're putting down roots, we're raising families, we're opening businesses, and building cultural centers. And through NCAP, we're turning that into growth through political power. Our deep canvassing efforts and conversations here in Cary show that people really care about economy, affordable housing, education, and immigration. But we've also seen our share of struggles: targeted disinformation, voter intimidation, and language barriers too. That's why our focus is education, empowerment, and protection: helping voters feel confident, informed, and heard. So, as we listen to our candidates today, we want to know, how will you reflect and respond to the fast-growing, deeply invested API community? And as a Cary resident myself, I'm excited to hear our candidates today will respond to this powerful community as well. Thank you so much, and thank you so much Gaye for inviting me here today.
Just a quick reminder for folks with their little cards. If you do have questions in Spanish, please feel free to write them down. You can look for me. I will be in the back, and I will be taking those from you.
Thank you so much to our cosponsors. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Cary Town Council candidates. I will also go over the format and a few rules before we start. For District A, Brittany Richards and Jennifer Robinson. For District C, Bella Huang and Rene Miller. And our at-large candidates, Marjorie Kay Eastman and Carissa Johnson. So, here are the ground rules, some for the audience. First, we ask that you silence your cellphones. I know a lot of you are taking pictures. That's great, but if you would just turn off the volumes, and I guess for the candidates too, if you haven't done that yet. And as I mentioned earlier, we do ask that you refrain from applauding because we know you're really enthusiastic, but we'd rather you channel that energy into those question cards and write those questions down, and it will allow us to stay on time. But with that in mind, I think it would be great if we give all of our candidates a round of applause right now. So, this is a forum. A forum is designed to give all the candidates an opportunity to present themselves to voters and speak on the issues. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement after the audience question portion is complete. One minute will be allowed to answer each question presented. There will not be rebuttal per se. Rather, candidates may use their closing statement to provide whatever additional information they think is required. We do have folks timing the answers. We have two volunteers up front. Wave your hands so the candidates can see you. So, candidates, please keep an eye on the timer. John, can you show them the cards that they will get? So, you'll have one minute. She will give you 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. So, when you see "stop," we ask that you complete your sentence and then stop speaking. So, let me share for the audience just a little information about the Town Council structure. The council terms are for four years, and council members are elected on a rotating schedule. As you are now aware, if you weren't already, this year, Districts A, C, and One-at-Large seat will be elected. And all seats are elected on a nonpartisan basis. For our candidates, we have six candidates for three positions up for election, and we're really proud that they're all with us tonight. We will have six rounds of prepared questions before the audience questions, and each candidate will be presented with the same questions, with one exception that is specific to districts, and that'll be the final one. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to Cary. If you feel there is something particular to your district, of course, feel free to cover that in your response. The candidates are listed and seated here by district and then alphabetical order by last name. The speaking order will rotate within each district. So, opening and closing statements will be in alphabetical order by last name in the way that you are seated. The questions I will ask, one through six, will be answered by each district's candidates, taking turns in answering the question first. And I will call out your names so you don't have to remember which goes next. The at-large candidates as well will take turns in answering. Before we begin, I'd like to verify with the candidates that you have not received the questions in advance. Can you just verbally verify? Go ahead Bella. You received the questions in advance?
Yes, we did not receive the questions in advance.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So, let's begin. You will each now have one minute for your opening statement, and we will begin with Brittany. Brittany, please go ahead.
Well, hello everyone. I am Brittany Richards, your candidate for Cary Town Council District A. I am a mom of four kids, proud to be in our Wake County Public Schools. And while I am new to your ballot, I am not new to the work of helping communities thrive. I have a background in public policy, and I've worked in the nonprofit field. But I really just want to take my minute to thank the League of Women Voters, to thank the engaged residents here tonight. I am a lifelong political volunteer. I have been a poll greeter. I have been an inside poll observer, and I wholeheartedly support your mission of keeping voting as accessible as possible to as many people as possible and keeping our electorate informed. So, I am honored to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you Brittany. Jennifer, please go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and to our sponsors and to all of you for being here tonight. My name's Jennifer Robinson, and I've lived in Cary for the last 30 years. This is where I've raised my four children, I've built my career, and I've dedicated myself to public service. Since joining, well, I should say, my day job is at SAS, and I've been on the council for the last 25 years. From the beginning of the time that I started serving, I've tried to make Cary a place that people love to call home. A place where new development is harmonious with existing neighborhoods. A place where our infrastructure keeps up with our development. A place that is notably beautiful with forests, trees, ample parks, and beautiful greenways and medians. And a place that people can traverse and get across town. I'm running again because I think that we need to have experienced leadership to help us navigate the complex financial times that we're in. I bring experience and knowledge, as well as valuable relationships and a passion for good government.
Thank you Jennifer. Bella, please go ahead.
Good evening everyone. I'm Bella Huang, and I'm running for Cary Town Council for District C. I'm a mother of four as well, and, yeah, three, yeah. And also, I'm a small business owner and a community advocate. I chose Cary to be my home because it's such a great place to raise your family, start your small business, and it's such a welcoming neighborhood. My background is computer science, and I came to US to pursue my MBA degree. And after I received my MBA degree, I came to Cary and I never leave. I started my small business here. We supported our teachers, provide them free laptop covers. And also, I co-founded nonprofit organizations to uplift underrepresented communities. And also, I'm the school board member of the Chinese Language School here. So, the reason why I want to run, because I want to give back. Because Cary is the place where I realize my American dream. So, thank you everyone. Thank you.
Thank you Bella. Renee, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Renee Miller, and I'd like to thank the League and the sponsors for organizing this event this evening. I'm a North Carolina native, but came to Cary by way of Texas and then Georgia, where I met and married my husband 35 years ago. I have been a full-time mother and homeschooled my children for 18 years, and then turned to caregiving for my aging parents. But during that time, I've been an active community and civic volunteer, coaching speech and debate, coaching robotics, and working in the community as an observer for the Board of Elections for the last five years, along with volunteering for the town of Cary. My volunteer work with the town of Cary includes Greenways, where I'm the current Acting Chair of the Greenway Committee. I came to love Cary and became connected to this community from the beginning, when we moved here 15 years ago. And I hope to continue to serve and leave a legacy here. Thank you.
Thank you Renee. Marjorie, please go ahead.
Hello, I'm Marjorie Eastman. And I don't have four kids, but maybe if I count our two rescue dogs and the hamster, that rounds up. And I don't think my son would mind that at all. I hope you can hear me okay. I'm on the upswing of getting better, and I've got a raspy voice right now. It reminds me of my sister, who's been a teacher, a lifelong teacher. At the beginning of the school year, she always loses her voice, so now I can relate. Tonight is about our voices. It's about being heard, and it's about hearing your voice, and that's why I'm here. Three years ago, I volunteered as a citizen member to be on the Economic Development Committee because I am in business development in my day job, and I'm also on the Vanderbilt Business School Board, where I wanted to bring those resources back to this great town that had been planned so well. But there was a turning point, I realized, when I stepped in into that committee. Our town is at a major turning point. I want to restore fiscal responsibility. I want to prioritize safety. And then I also want to make sure, ooh, I got the red flash card. I can finish the sentence right. I also want to make sure that every voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you Marjorie. Carissa, please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here today and for all the, you know, energy that goes into organizing something like this. Just want to honor that. And I see a lot of familiar faces in this crowd. I see a lot of people that have supported me and those that disagree with me. Regardless, thank you for being here. And one of the things that I like to share with folks who may not be familiar with my story is that it's really uniquely Cary, I believe. Moved here in the mid-'90s. I was all 23 years old. And I'm one of those folks that likes to travel, but I don't like to leave Cary much if I don't have to. I work in Cary. I currently work from home. I've worked at software companies and a learning company off of Dillard Drive and off of, you know, every street in town. If you look at it, I either worked there part-time in college or I took my daughter to school there. And it's something that really drives me to make sure that the story that I've had, growing up in a working-class family in Western New York and coming to Cary when I was young, that others can have the same kind of opportunity as me. So, I'm honored to serve, and thank you for being here.
Thank you Carissa. The first question. How would you use input from resident community groups and commissions to shape policy and ensure that residents' voices are meaningfully included in town governance? So, we'll start with Jennifer. Jennifer, you have one minute to answer this question.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I began my involvement in the town three years before I joined the council, going to council meetings and advocating for my neighbors because things were happening in Western Cary, and I didn't think that the council was aware of the feelings and sentiment of the people that lived in the areas affected. And so, I would go to council meetings and advocate. I'd write letters to the Cary News, for those of you who remember the wonderful Cary News. And it was really important that voices were heard and that citizens were represented. So, as a council member, I've always prioritized that. I've always had an open-door policy. If anyone asks for a meeting, I always meet with whomever asks. And it's, we have great committees and boards that we give citizens an opportunity to participate. But also, I accept those invitations when groups want me to come over and meet with their teams, their tribes, their scouts. You know, whomever it is, I come and participate. And I think it's just having that openness with your citizens that is so important for a council.
Thank you Jennifer. Brittany, you have one minute to answer the question.
Sure. I'm proud to experience this firsthand. So, I serve on the Town of Cary Environmental Advisory Board, one of our many citizen opportunities for engagement. And I serve on that board in particular because environmentalism is close to my heart. But what I appreciate about those boards is that they are intentionally inclusive. And so, I know that diversity, equity, and inclusion have gotten to be dangerous words sometimes in public space, but I am here to say that I support diversity, equity, and inclusion in our town policies, on our town boards. These voices should be heard. So, the Environmental Advisory Board, we have cross-representation geographically from Cary, all of the metrics that you could think of. And all of our boards should make sure that all of our voices are heard. The same should be true of town events. Cary is a diverse and welcoming place, and it needs to stay that way.
Thank you. Renee, you now have one minute to answer the first question.
How would I use citizen input and our community boards and commissions for information that makes our citizens' voices meaningful and included? I believe that we are seeing some examples of that even now. As the Chair of the Town Greenway Committee, we actually did give some advice earlier this year when it came time to make some very important decisions for our town. We had to prioritize which projects made the most sense to continue and which projects might make sense to pause. And that information was... And that information was taken to council and seems to have been taken under advisement at this time. But as far as how I would use that information, I believe it is important to listen to those commissions and boards. But I also believe it's important to offer the citizens an opportunity to speak out, particularly on the budget, and I hope to be able to do that.
Thank you, Renee. Bella, you now have one minute to answer.
For this question, I think I have some evidence from the Asian-American community, because we are like twenty percent of Cary's population now, and we know that Cary has over sixty nationalities, and twenty-five percent of the residents are born outside of US. So we can see Cary is just so diversified. How we can build bridges from our government to our different kind of communities. I'm an example, because I know like Carissa Johnson and Laurie Bush and Michelle Creek and Sarika Bensel, they all went to our celebrations, cultural celebrations, and also people can talk to them. So this is a good way for the council members to learn the community needs. And also, we are as the community members and we can express our ideas to them. And I think for the future councilwoman, if I can, and I'm elected, I will go to all the communities to talk to the community members to learn what they need, so we can build a better Cary together.
Thank you, Bella. Carissa, you now have one minute to answer the first question.
Thank you. Yes. When it comes to community feedback, whether it be an organized group, like an advisory board or a community group, what I found really important is cross-pollination. And by that, I'll give you an example, I love to speak in anecdotes. My senior advisory board, well, technically the towns, but I adore them and I'm their liaison, so I think of them as my senior advisory board. They get asked for feedback on a variety of topics, everything from our town budget to, you know, the website and how best to communicate with older adults. And that kind of feedback, I noticed along the way, is really robust, because getting people from all walks of life, and we're not asking a group sort of the questions they're often asked or they're expected to answer. And so what we're getting is different perspectives. I think our staff does a phenomenal job of that when they go out into the community and they get purposeful feedback. I think they're just doing more and more and more of that. So I'd say a lot more of what they're doing now, just that, you know, at a bigger and higher number of sort of exchanges between the residents and the staff will get us a lot more feedback.
Thank you, Chrisa. Marjorie, you now have one minute to answer the question.
Before, for the clarification on the question, I just wanted to make sure if you could confirm that you didn't know about my opening statement about using a voice? Because that geared my opening statement perfectly, I have to say. So you did not. I did not. So incorporating voices. You know, I served in the military. I joined after nine eleven because of nine eleven. And being in the military and the intelligence community, it's all about listening to all sides of the aisle, all people, because you need all the information to make really good decisions. And those decisions, lives are on the line. I was so blessed to be able to be picked to be a citizen member of our towns committee. And being on the Economic Development Committee, we have great committees with wonderful experts that are offering important, important information that our council members need to hear. And of the eight, nine citizen members that are business leaders like myself on the economic committee, for three years, we've been saying, why are we overspending the town budget? Why are we raising property taxes the highest we've ever raised them? We kept asking these questions. We need the council members to hear the experts and to hear the voices. So as someone who's an intelligence officer from the military, I value voices, I value input, and we need our council to do that as well.
Thank you, Marjorie. So we'll now move to the second question. And I will let candidates know, because we have so many candidates answering the question, if you would like the question repeated, feel free to ask. The second question. Wake County towns have been growing rapidly. How would you help ensure that housing in Cary is affordable for working families, seniors, and young people? And we'll start with Brittany in District A. Brittany, you have one minute to answer this question.
Sure. I'm running on a three-policy platform, and one of those policies is prioritizing a range of housing options. And so when we talk about affordable housing, I mentioned that sometimes we can use a tool we're more familiar with, which is when a multifamily unit is developed, you can set aside a certain number of units at an accessible rental rate, and that's an important tool. But I'm also running on a slightly more creative vision when it comes to zoning and the kinds of properties that we're prioritizing. And so that could mean for the young adult who grew up in Cary but would like to move back here as a recent college graduate, we're prioritizing building smaller square-footage condos and apartments that's naturally going to be more affordable and accessible. Or at the other end of the spectrum, you have a senior who would like to age in place. If we prioritize building single-story bungalows with that prized first-floor bedroom, that's also going to be a kind of property that's inherently more accessible, more affordable for that person.
Thank you, Brittany. Jennifer, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Like many of you, I have children who would like to move back to Cary. One of them is a schoolteacher in the Wake County schools, and there's no way that she can afford living in Cary. It's really disheartening that she, that houses have become so unaffordable. And like Brittany said, one of the tools that we can use is by having smaller units. For that reason, you know, I think about my daughter, she's not able even to afford a town home at this point. So I've been talking with financial institutions about the idea of having them be the guarantor of condo development, and I've been talking to developers about building condos. The reason why you need to have a financial institution be the guarantor is that condo developers have to pre-sell a certain number of units before they can get their construction loan. So by marrying up these different bodies, we can address the biggest barrier to condo development and maybe turn some of these multifamily rental projects that have been proposed into for ownership.
Thank you, Jennifer. Bella, you have one minute.
For the housing, I think it's the whole Wake County issues now, because people who live here, who was born here, couldn't afford to live here anymore, especially for teachers, police officers, firefighters, and the service providers. So I think the only solution, if a lot of people don't like density, but that is the only solution. I've talked to some affordable housing builders, they're nonprofit, and for a town home, it will cost three hundred thousand a unit. How can a just young professional could afford that? And some working-class family couldn't afford that. So for the smaller units, that means density, and people don't like it. And the most important thing, I think, is for the town council to decide where the density could be and where, how do we work, how do we build partnership with public and private partnerships together, so we can provide the housing options for these in need. This Cary is such a great place. This is our home. It's for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bella. Renee, you now have one minute.
I too have observed that there are some changes in the way that we're building, and a good bit of that has to do with affordability. I think we do need to build smaller units, as several of the other candidates have mentioned. And we do need to be looking at things that are more dense. And part of that is that we have a limited amount of land that's left to build on. And because of that limited amount of land, the cost of land is very high. The other part, there are other things that contribute to the building costs, the cost of materials, the cost of labor, all those things have gone up over the last several years. And what Cary really has control over is the regulations and the fees and the permitting that's involved. We don't want to sacrifice our standards. What we want to end up with is buildings that we like now, not just now, but ten years from now or twenty years from now. But we do need to be looking at size, and we do need to be looking at ways to help young people get on the property ladder.
Thank you, Renee. Marjorie, you now have one minute.
Okay. Keeping Cary affordable starts with keeping our taxes as low as possible. Tax hikes are going to tax people out of their homes. Affordability is an equation, as I heard Jennifer Robin describe so well once, and affordable housing needs to be thought about as pathways to homeownership. Homeownership. I know the first house that I bought when we were stationed in Texas, it was, you know, a very small, like, three-bedroom home in my twenties. The house I bought later in my thirties, when I was stationed in Tennessee, it was a little bit bigger, a little bit more. And so we need those pathways so that individuals can create wealth through those layers. And so that's what we need to focus on when we're listening to developers. I love everything, so many things that I've heard right down this table on having those different opportunities and those different sizes of homes. We have to get away from this concept of just succumbing to this idea that we have to create a rental economy with dense apartment buildings. That is not necessarily the answer. So let's be brave and let's say, let's help people have pathways to homeownership and keep their homes.
Thank you, Marjorie. Chrisa, you now have one minute.
Yes, thank you. When it comes to affordable housing, this is a really complex topic. And, you know, I hear my colleagues here to my right talking about really great solutions, and they're absolutely right. You know, as I hear Brittany discuss those local targeted solutions, she's right. When I hear Jennifer talk about new ways and new types to, you know, types of things to build that people can have homeownership opportunities, she's absolutely right. But the thing is, we need to have a lot of changes at the state level. I know I personally chair the Housing Work Group for the State Multi-Sector Plan for Aging, and just had a meeting today. And one of the things we're trying to do is get property tax relief allowed at the state level. It's one of those things that we just can't do. We have minimal leverage here to, you know, fund our local government, and we understand that that is a very big challenge for residents. But all along the way, there's a concert of solutions that we need to have that work together. And really, we need to have both a state, county, and local solution, and we need the private and nonprofit builders in our area to work with us. And so it's really a lot more complex than simply reducing property taxes and building more.
Thank you, Chrisa. We'll now move on to the third question. How do you plan to balance the need for housing and economic development with infrastructure and traffic concerns and to preserve green space? Jennifer, we'll start with you. You have one minute.
Okay, I feel very comfortable talking about this because I've been doing it now for twenty-five years. Matching infrastructure is very challenging, making sure that you have adequate water, sewer, roads, parks, greenways, libraries, schools, all of that is a challenge. And zoning is very complex when you try to consider all of those things. We have a lot of tools in our tool belt in Cary that enable us to be able to match infrastructure, but we have drifted away over time from paying attention to the road standards that, for the longest time, were front and center in rezoning applications. And I do think it's very important for us to refocus on traffic, congestion, intersections, and making sure that we have the road network to be able to support the people that choose to move here.
Jennifer, thank you. Brittany, you now have one minute.
Two-part answer. One, on the infrastructure question, is a lot of what I wind up doing as a candidate is voter education and talking about what town councils can and cannot do. And Carissa just alluded to this, that I sometimes joke that I wish council was as omnipotent as people think it is, that we can dictate, and really, it is a softer power of leverage. And some of that requires working with the General Assembly to ask for more municipal authority, to ask more of our developers. So that is a long-term goal. But on the tree canopy and green spaces, that is another cornerstone of my campaign, protecting our tree canopy and our green spaces. I don't think that is at odds with building. I think it is simply a matter of applying that value to the decisions that you're making. And so I tell folks, when you're electing someone to town council, you are saying, I have faith in your judgment and your decision-making, you're going to apply the values and the lens I would like you to apply. And so one of my promises is that tree canopy and green spaces would be one of my top priorities that I would apply to those decisions.
Thank you, Brittany. Renee, you now have one minute.
This was a multiple-part question. Would you mind repeating it, please?
Not at all. It was, it is. How do you plan to balance the need for housing and economic development with infrastructure, traffic concerns, and to preserve green space?
Preserving green space starts at home. And I believe that we need to be educating our current populace on how to maintain that green space in our own yards. It's much easier to just cut down that tree that's ill or, and not replace it, or things of that nature. So I think that we need to be looking at essentially building a national park in our private lands. Infrastructure, we have some challenges, and we're seeing that in my district. Not only are we seeing the traffic locally be a problem, but we're seeing traffic coming in from our neighbors and neighboring communities where large, where large, large residential areas are being built. We need to focus on that traffic and we need to do that at both the state and the local level, and that's going to be our challenge over the next few years.
Thank you, Renee. Bella, you now have one minute.
Yeah, for the infrastructure, when I'm talking to voters, this is the top priority from them, because we need to invest in stormwater systems, our roads, but they are expensive, but they are the needs. But how to improve our traffic? Now, a lot of people are walking or biking in our neighborhood, and the safety is also another issue. But how can we just commute in our neighborhood but also very safe? I think the connected greenways is a great idea, and also other public transit, like bus transportation. So I think in the future, the town will invest in more infrastructure like this, so people can walk and bike in our community, and we don't have to drive so much. And it's also very eco-friendly. And also with the new development, we need to pressure on the builders to plant more trees and invest in infrastructure, so it will relieve our taxpayers' burden, so we can win-win. But I don't think a lot of builders would like that, but that's our only choice.
Thank you, Bella. Chrisa, you now have one minute.
Yeah, we need to balance economic development, the need for housing and the need to build in general. I think that one of the things that is one of the north stars for me is Sierra Club's Urban Infill Policy Guidance for municipalities. I looked at that, and it's a very simple document that really tells us we need to tap into our existing infrastructure. One of the things that's reflected in the property tax bills right now is sprawling infrastructure that's been adding that we now need to maintain. And that's not inexpensive by any stretch of the imagination. You couple that with some of the challenges that we're seeing with huge plural events, really heavy rain from climate change, and we need to invest in bigger, higher-capacity stormwater infrastructure. It pains me to know that there's a lot of people in Cary whose homes and businesses are not properly insured and are at risk. And I do fancy myself the stormwater hawk on council because I won't shut up about it. But that's part of what I think is my responsibility, to make sure that these things that I know well, I'm paying a lot of attention to. And finally, when it comes to green space protection, I think it's important that we pay close attention to both our wildlife and our plant corridors and make sure that we don't have isolated habitats that we consider open space when we know it's just not particularly healthy.
Thank you, Chrisa. Marjorie, you now have one minute.
Well, I'm impressed how everyone could use one minute to answer that three-part question, first of all. I'd like to say I love that Bella pointed out the need to continue to have our interconnected greenways and sidewalks. Thank you to Jennifer Robinson. My neighborhood is connected to greenways and parks because she's been the leader for our town for more than twenty-five years doing that. And my little boy, in the new density and the additional traffic we now have in our town, can ride his little scooter to the neighborhood not far away and hop on greenways to go and see his friends. And a lot of kids are doing this in my part of Cary. And let me tell you about our infrastructure. We need to make sure we're not only maintaining it, but thinking smart about the technology we're using for safety. Because right up on the corner where Chick-fil-A is off of High House, my little boy, his friend from middle school, there was a little girl last year named Chloe that was killed. A truck hit her and she died. So we need to absolutely prioritize. This is personal to me because I have a little son that is meeting his friends. We need to make sure we're focusing on all the wonderful things that our town is and maintaining and making sure we have safety.
Thank you, Marjorie. The fourth question. What is your vision for public safety in the town? And what would you do to help ensure that policing is transparent, equitable, and responsive to diverse community needs? Brittany, we'll start with you. You have one minute.
So funny that you should ask this, because I was just speaking about two hours ago about our Cary Police Department and how I think the world of them. It was actually in relation It was actually in relation to political protest. And I was telling the political volunteers that our police department works closely with the protesters to ensure everyone's safety. And so I think it's a matter of keeping up the good work, quite honestly, and making sure that they are fully funded. Nearly half of our budget goes to public safety and public works. And so it is vital that we keep those essential services fully funded. And I fully support conscientious, community-based policing. I think those decisions should remain local. I don't think that we need to have the federal government influence our policing decisions because I think local law enforcement knows the best decisions for local populations.
Thank you, Brittany. Jennifer, you now have one minute.
I agree with Brittany. A big part of our budget has to do with public safety. And in these times where our budget is going to be constrained for years to come, it's going to be more important than ever that we prioritize and spend our money on what's most important to our citizens. When I talk to residents who have moved here from other places, they most often note that they came to Cary because it's safe and it's something that they value. So for us to be able to maintain our safety, we need to make sure that we keep the resources that our officers need, that our police department need, and that our fire department needs. We need to be looking at those metrics that are important, such as response times for emergencies. And we need to make sure that we don't allow our service levels to erode. And I completely agree about community policing. We've done a lot of, taken a lot of actions over the last several years to move to community policing and to provide the personal touch with our citizens that they look for.
Thank you, Jennifer. Bella, you now have one minute.
Yeah, for the safety, I have some experiences. Because my neighbor's house was broken several years ago and she always out of town. And the other day, last month, she texted me, said she's not home and a strange car in front of her house on the street. And she asked me to call the police and I just called 911. And you know what? It responds so quickly and a police officer just called me and asked me about it. And he was outside my house and I was not home. So I took a picture of that car's plate and let him know. And he just checked that plate number and let me know if this is safe. And I so appreciate that for the police officer, just quick respond and go to my house and make sure we are safe. The other thing I think is so important, you need to have good neighbors, is community watch. You cannot, we cannot, we keep investing in police officers, but also the neighbors, so important. So community, we are family, so we need to support each other and watch for our safety.
Thank you, Bella. Renee, you now have one minute.
I too believe that it's important that public safety have a priority in our budget. And it does, the public safety staffing does take up a significant amount of Cary's budget. Safety is a value here. I had the privilege, two years ago, to attend the Citizens Police Academy. And if you haven't had a chance to register for that course, I encourage you to do that. It's six weeks of an exploration of what happens within our police department. And it's helped me both learn more about how the department operates as well as be able to share with my fellow citizens that information. Our police officers have some challenges and we are still growing in Cary, even if we are growing up rather than out. We need to be sure that the police department is growing appropriately with the population so that we can still stay one of the safest cities in the nation.
Thank you, Renee. Marjorie, you now have one minute.
So, in my mind, public safety should be our number-one priority. It should be our number-one priority. And yes, that is my background of being involved in safety and security. But I'm a mom. I have people in this town that I love dearly, my friends, my neighbors. And we need to make sure that public safety is always a number-one priority. Now, I told you I had an older sister that was a teacher. I also have an older sister that's an accountant. And she tells me, "Look at where the money goes because that'll tell you if people prioritize, what they prioritize." Well, it's been almost three years since the council has approved to hire a new firefighter or a police officer. And we've grown quite a bit in three years. So the money's going other places and there needs to be an assessment and an understanding. We need a watchdog to someone have oversight of where all the extra money's going. We need to make sure that that money is going for our public safety first and foremost, and that's my strongest opinion.
Thank you, Marjorie. Carissa, you now have one minute.
Yeah, in prioritizing public safety, you know, if I want to ask chiefs, I call them my, I call our chiefs by their first name and it's still a little bit weird to get used to that, but I ask them what they need. They answer honestly. And I like to think that whatever they need, they're gonna get. That's, this council, regardless of, you know, whether we're Republicans or Democrats or any of those things, we support our public safety, fire and police. And we just staffed up two years ago, asked the chief if he needed more folks and he said we can wait a year. So they'll get more this year. This is not some lapse in judgment or deprioritization of public safety. It was just a critical budget year. So we paused because we were told it was fine to pause. I think it's really important for us to understand how far Cary's come in this community policing and this professional policing approach. Not too long ago, it was challenging for somebody of color to drive through Cary. You know, 20 years ago, I remember people talking about how challenging that was. And now we have professional policing in Cary. We have really good relationship building with our officers here in Cary. And it's absolutely phenomenal what they've built.
Thank you, Carissa. So we'll now move on to the fifth of our six prepared questions and then we'll move to audience questions. Our fifth question. Small businesses are the backbone of communities. What steps would you take to attract and retain small businesses, including minority-owned businesses? Jennifer, you have one minute to answer the question.
Okay. We're very fortunate that the town has a great relationship with our Chamber of Commerce. And that has been a big opportunity for us to be able to open our arms to new businesses that want to get established in Cary. We have several programs through the chamber that help new business owners get informed about Cary and be able to establish themselves. As far as having opportunities for minority-owned businesses or female-led businesses, we, we don't, we don't have anything that I know of right now that is specifically called out for types, for certain types of businesses. I just know that we are an environment that really is open to encouraging entrepreneurship and the establishment of businesses. And so I would say that if we're missing the mark, if we are not being welcoming to minority-owned businesses or female-owned businesses, then that's important information for us to take in so that we can consider what can be done for it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Brittany, you now have one minute.
I told you that my professional background is in the nonprofit field, but my particular specialty was cross-sector collaboration. And so for a number of years, I worked in a grant-making capacity that required me to convene some of the top business executives from where I was living at the time to make collective community decisions about how to invest our dollars. Because I know that it takes all sectors, all parts of the community, including the business community in collaboration with government, to help our communities thrive. But I think my platform is also an economic development platform. So I told you, it is protecting tree canopy and green spaces. It's preserving our high-quality town services. It's prioritizing the range of housing options. What keeps Cary a desirable place to live and work is what is also going to make it a desirable place to have a small business. Because you will have people who want to live here, people who can afford to live here, and then they can work and live in the same place. So if we continue to develop our workforce, that means that small businesses have the employees that they need because we're a desirable place to live.
Thank you, Brittany. Renee, you have one minute.
I think that solving this problem isn't entirely unlike solving the affordable housing problem, much as Brittany just said. We need to have this be a place that not only that people can afford to live, but that people can afford to do business. As an entrepreneur myself, but way back in what seems like a former life, I know what it is to start a business from your basement. Build it into something where you have other people working with you and serve 500 companies from a small office. We need to have some of those options for small businesses as they grow so that we can encourage them along the way. Entrepreneurship seems to be something that we find, that we find in Cary very often because we have a lot of very bright, creative people here. And I think we need to do things to support that so that they can form a business here and who knows, maybe build something really great.
Thank you, Renee. Bella, you have one minute to answer the question.
As a small business owner myself, my business has been running for over 10 years. And I really have the experience how hard it is to start a business and how hard it is to sustain a business. I'm a Chamber of Commerce member and also I'm the API Chamber of Commerce in our Asian American Community Member. So we know a lot of minorities, they're, some of people, some of them don't have the resources how to start a business or where to go, or some of them has language barriers. So we support them because we are, we have kind of been running a business for over 10 years. So my husband and I always go to our events to share our experiences and introduce them to different people and more resources. I think, I think for the town, we also can provide that kind of support to these entrepreneurs. And these people will bring up more employment and also the town can also provide more resources for the workforce. So we work together, we communicate together. I think we can help small businesses to thrive in Cary.
Thank you, Bella. Carissa, you now have one minute.
I believe we have a very pro-business environment in general here in Cary, but don't believe we do a particularly good job supporting minority-owned, female-owned, or disability-owned businesses. As a matter of fact, it was brought to us on council just a couple of years ago in a work session. Actually, it was a quarterly meeting where we wanted to focus more on women-owned and minority-owned businesses as partners for the town. And the honest truth is, half of our council pushed back really hard. So this is one of those examples where, you know, it's the will of council dictates the policy here in Cary. So if the will of council is for us to support minority-owned and female-owned businesses, then that's more likely to happen and it's more likely to happen well. So we do have a lot of staff focus on trying to be extremely equitable when it comes to our contracts and those that we deal with as a government. There isn't currently a really solid focus on targeting the groups. That could bring a lot more diversity in thought and product in the services they deliver to the town.
Thank you, Carissa. Marjorie, you have one minute.
I think Renee said something so smart in that affordability isn't something that we should just think of for individuals, but we need to think about affordability as it pertains to businesses and small businesses. Excuse me, that voice of mine, right? I thought that was very, very smart because that's exactly how we attract small businesses to want to be in Cary. There's an equation to that affordability. And from my background, since I left business school at Vanderbilt, it's been my passion to work with small businesses that are either women-owned, disabled, veteran-owned, and also just overall, you know, incredibly diverse businesses that are bringing in different industries into our town. So, you know, Carissa's very wise in saying, you know, you have to have someone that prioritizes that. And that's definitely been my life path after I left business the last 12 years. We should absolutely be prioritizing to give all people and all small businesses the opportunity to make Cary even better.
Thank you, Marjorie. We'll now move on to the sixth question. We ask that the candidates focus their responses on their district. The question is, what is one of the biggest issues in the District of Cary you seek to represent? And how would you lead the town to address it? And we'll start with Brittany.
I think that a particular need of District A is actually applicable to all of Cary. And so this is going to be budget constraints. For example, in District A, anybody familiar with Louis Stevens Drive knows that it does not have a sidewalk. There's many amenities and schools in that area. Sidewalk has been a priority there for a long time. But the town budget just paused 68 capital projects because there simply is not enough money for that kind of work right now. And I reject the notion that there's not enough money because of waste or mismanagement. And something I can point to that bolsters that belief is that budget was passed unanimously. That is not to say that we don't have significant budget challenges. I'm running as a pragmatic candidate. I'm not going to offer you a magic wand. We are going to have to make tough decisions. There are going to be trade-offs and compromises. But we could identify community needs, community priorities to invest our dollars wisely.
Thank you, Brittany. Jennifer, you have one minute to answer this question.
Okay. As I talk to residents of District A, what I hear most often is concern about the cost of living, the cost of the property taxes going up so substantially. So it's critically important that we keep our taxes as low as possible. This is challenging because our revenue growth is now being eclipsed by our inflationary growth of running the town. Inflation is going up, but on top of that, our infrastructure's aging. And so it costs more for us to maintain our infrastructure to its standards. So this is going to be a big challenge. Going forward, we are going to have to strictly prioritize how we use our funds. For me, that means focusing on safety, giving our police and fire the resources they need, and addressing the safety issues on our roads that are critically important. I've been advocating for Louis Stevens Drive for probably 10 years now. And it was very disappointing that we had to pause it. But we did that so that we could protect the property tax rate for all citizens. But going forward, there'll be several roads that, in District A, that will need to be addressed for safety. Jenks Carpenter and Louis Stevens Drive, not just the portion that Brittany mentioned, but the S-curve that's up near the farm park. Those are areas that we really need to be tending to.
Thank you, Jennifer. And before I move on to District C, I want to let our at-large district candidates know the question will be slightly different for you. Bella, you now have one minute to answer the sixth question.
For Cary District C, I think it's older than District A and District D because a lot of people have been living in District C for 30, 40 years. And I talked to a gentleman, he is 94, 97 years old. He has been living in Lockmere for over 50 years. He has, they all like the services and the environment in District C and people just want to protect our environment. And that is, that is, I think that's very important. But we know there are a lot of redevelopment in District C because like South Hill Mall and Crossroads and other, other commercial buildings that are not as favorite as 30 years ago. So how do we keep up infrastructure to match the redevelopment in the future? I think that is very important. And I see a lot of like stormwater systems, streets we need to invest in, and also connected greenways, sidewalks, crosswalks to make sure the people in the neighborhood are commuting safely.
Thank you, Bella. Renee, you now have one minute to answer.
When I'm out knocking doors, I typically hear one of two answers to this question. The first is, "I can't bear my taxes going up anymore because I won't be able to stay in my home." This is from many of our older residents. As Bella observed, District C was developed 40 years ago and more. And people are very settled there. And that leads to the second item that I hear very often, which is, "Why are there all these apartment buildings?" And so the questions about the taxes and development are very serious in District C. I think as far as the development, it's important for us to be sure that those developments that are happening, that are new, match what's going on next door and has been going on for a long time. And as far as taxes, we are challenged in that we are growing differently and going to have to find a new point of balance for, so that our taxes are not putting people out of their homes, but at the same time, we're able to maintain the services and safety that we need.
Thank you, Renee. For our at-large candidates, your question. As an at-large council member, how would you balance the needs of specific? As an at-large council member, how would you balance the needs of specific districts with the town's overall needs? Marjorie, you have one minute to answer this question.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I told you I only had one child, so he gets everything, right? Um, but I do have a lot of brothers and sisters. And the way my mom and dad prioritized all of us, um, was an example I take to heart. It is absolutely something that can be done. And it starts with the money, right? We gotta make sure we have the money spread equally across all the districts for the needs that are, that are being brought forth. Um, I wanted to ask a question. Does anyone drive an electric car? I do. Anyone drive electric? No one in the, no one in the room. That's incredible. Um, okay, a few people are raising their hands now. So, you know, we do need to dig into the budget and the money because I drive an electric car and there are great cost savings with that. But our town just spent 1.8 million dollars for an electric fire truck. And a regular fire truck costs about $600,000. So they spent a million dollars over budget, a million dollars that we don't have that could have helped build that fire station out in District D, or helped those roads that we're talking about in District C. So we need to think about how are we spending our money? Because that is how we can make sure we're helping every single neighbor in our wonderful town.
Thank you, Marjorie. Chrisa, you have one minute.
I believe that um, the case is actually the opposite, absolutely opposite. Uh, we are not equally dividing up the budget by district. That's not practical. And it, it's honestly, it's, it's very much like work. I know, I work um, for a software company and I'm constantly having to understand what's the most important thing and what's the most urgent thing. But what needs my attention, my time and my energy first? So when we've got critical infrastructure that we need to maintain, um, sometimes you can do a lot of cheap things too and, and get more done than the really, really critical expensive projects. So what you'll see if you look at historically what the council have done, and I gotta give them credit, they've done a fantastic job about this. It's moving around Cary. Um, so when one district is being, you know, left behind a little bit, they move to that district, invest in that district, which is what you see here in District B right now. Um, so I believe that it's really important that we're very, very mindful as at-large representatives of the whole community and what is critical, what's urgent, what's important, and be really smart about how we prioritize.
Thank you, Chrisa. This concludes our prepared questions, and I see Cheryl coming up with some audience questions. I'm gonna change up the order a little bit, and we'll start with our at-large candidates. So the first question from the audience, and I'll start with at-large, then go to District A and then District C. What will you do to be fully transparent on bond issues in terms of giving voters both the build cost and the maintenance cost? So we'll start with at-large and begin with Chrisa. You have one minute.
Yeah, I just answered this question for a questionnaire, and I feel strongly about this. The bond reference, with referendums we just had on the, on the ballot were really important. And particularly to me, uh, I inherited sort of really robust plans, really great plans for some investments. And I know I was uncomfortable even considering the spends at that level without really, really obvious marching orders from voters saying, yes, we want these things and yes, we're willing to pay for them, right? So even if they'd passed marginally, I would have wanted to go back to the drawing board and rethink our plans without overwhelming support. Uh, the learning there was what we didn't do well when we did the bond education. What we didn't do well is get extremely specific about how we were going to apply that money. We gave a broad goal-type plan, but what we didn't do is actually tell people what all the pieces and parcels of that plan was. It was there, it was fleshed out. We just kept it far too high level. And one of the things I hear all the time is we don't want to guesstimate, right? We don't want to guesstimate what your taxes might be for the next three years, even though we have an idea of what that really looks like. And we don't want to guesstimate what operating costs are. But we have one of the smartest group of citizens on the planet. They can understand if we give them a range of what the operating costs, that it'll fall somewhere in between that number and not expect it to be at the lowest operating cost. So we can do that better.
Thank you, Chrisa. Marjorie, you have one minute.
What a compliment like Chris just said, I really think it's a great idea that we have to be specific on the numbers. We absolutely need to make sure that those numbers are available and they are on our website. Um, if you go to the Town of Cary website right now and you request to read meeting minutes or uh, working group minutes, you will not find them because they are not updated. They are not updated. So a big part of answering this question, and when I get in and I'm part of the council, is that you have to have transparency and you have to make sure the information is given to each and every citizen in a way that they can have access to it.
Thank you, Marjorie. Jennifer, you'll be next. You have one minute.
Sure. The language on the ballot that accompanies a bond referendum is prescribed by the state. So we follow the guidance of the state on what we put on the ballot. Now, with that being said, there's always an opportunity on the website for the town and through public meetings to communicate the impact of decisions of capital spending. One thing our council used to do regularly is when we considered a capital expenditure, we contemplated what the operating expenses would be going forward. And we use that information to make a determination about whether or not it was a good use of our funds. We have not been doing that in recent years, and I think it's a practice that would improve our budgeting process. And I think our citizens deserve it. A lot of people have um, questioned why we put such an ambitious um, referendum before citizens. I'm not sorry that we put it before them because it gave every citizen the opportunity to indicate what they believed in, what was most important to them. And when we received the no votes, what we were told by our citizens is that what was most important to them was maintaining their taxes as low as possible.
Thank you, Jennifer. Brittany, you have one minute.
As a challenger, it's always easy to Monday morning quarterback. But I think it is safe to say that uh, the citizens spoke, the voters spoke, and a bond package of that size with that price tag was simply not palatable. So I just want to assure the voters that I personally have heard that message loud and clear. I personally would support smaller packages that reflected a price tag and projects that communities uh, support that we've built some consensus around. Um, what was the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
What will you do to be fully transparent on bond issues in terms of giving voters the build cost and maintenance?
Thank you. I was going to answer on the transparency. I actually think that the town is already remarkably transparent. Um, and so I invite residents to come just like I do. I attend all of the council work sessions, all of our council sessions, which are also live-streamed and available on YouTube. I have not personally experienced not finding the, the minutes or the notes of the, the meetings that I would like to access. So I think we give great opportunity for resident engagement.
I can send you the links.
Oh, thank you. Renee, you now have one minute.
I found it interesting on last year's bond that um, for the first time, the state required um, that we reveal a lot more information about what the actual bond would cost and the effect that it would have on our taxes. Um, one of the things that I think happened is that our citizens actually went and learned to multiply um, during the summer when their taxes went up. And then find, and then, and then finding that it could go up another nine cents due to the bonds, um, made an impression on them, which we saw at the ballot box. Um, there was an awful lot of marketing I felt that went on with these bonds. But um, I think that we do a pretty good job at communicate, did a pretty good job communicating what they were for. However, the maintenance costs were not included, and there were concerns about that because of what happened with the downtown park. Um, I do believe in transparency. I, it, I think that we do an, an excellent job of it, but I'm sure there are places that we can improve, and I would seek those out as a member of council.
Thank you, Renee. Bella, you have one minute.
As we know now, Cary has over 190,000 residents in Cary. So it's really hard to run a, such a big town compared to 10 years ago. I think the town council members really did a great job. It's really hard. As raising four kids, I know how hard to, uh, to give them all what they, whatever they wants. But for the bond, I know all different uh, uh, communities, different people, they need different things. Like the downtown park, when I knock on doors, some people just love it, and some people just complain a lot about the maintenance. So we understand this is a communication. We need to listen to our uh, community members. So I think maybe more in the future, we can do more, the communication, use the social media. Because town council meeting is limited. How can 190,000 people to go to the town hall every month to listen to every vote, right? And also the uh, YouTube channel, not a lot of people using that. So can we connect with all the communities and get someone to spread the words and share that information? So we can get more transparent. The town is doing a lot of job, just a lot of people didn't pay attention to that.
Thank you, Bella. We have time for just a few more questions. And I'm going to address these audience questions only to one set of candidates. The first, uh, the next question is for our at-large candidates. And the au, the audience member has asked, is there a need to prioritize safety and police protection exceptionally when crime rates and police incidents in the town of Cary are well below the national average for towns of its size? Marjorie, you have one minute to answer the question.
Well, if you're comparing it to what town, Durham, you're comparing it to other areas that have more crime. You know, why don't we compare it to the standards of excellence? Did anybody read that W R A L article recently that talks about the increase in car break-ins in District D? It is real. We have increases. Yes, we may be a little bit lower than some of the areas that have higher, but that doesn't mean that we change our standards of safety and excellence. We should absolutely be making sure that we're prioritizing safety, and that's my strong opinion.
Thank you, Marjorie. Chrisa, you have one minute.
We're already prioritizing safety and delivering phenomenally. Um, and then there's areas, of course, car break-ins, everybody knows that there's been a significant problem with car break-ins. There was a task force created and it's being addressed. Uh, that's something I'm really proud of is how well we pivot here in Cary. Um, there's, it's not easy when you're, you're governmental. You, you move at the, the speed of molasses a lot of times. But our public safety does not. They, they, they really do respond very quickly. Um, and I just recently was discussing this with Chief Salt. I wanted to know about what our crime statistics look like. You know, all crime is down overall with the exception of those car break-ins and car, and the car thefts. So that's one of the, 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 the things that I think is important for us to understand in this, in this world where you're getting these negative messages to make you feel unsafe. The actuality is the opposite. You're actually quite safe and getting safer here in Cary. And we really are delivering world-class public safety as well as our, our, our fire. I mean, if you call 911, the fire department's there in under five minutes, and they can deliver lifesaving treatment here in Cary. Almost all of them are certified E M Ts. This is the type of services we're currently delivering, and we need to keep doing it exactly how we're doing it.
Thank you, Chrisa. The next audience, audience question is for District C. Why is District C so spread out with little areas south embedded in unincorporated areas? This audience question will go first to Bella.
Uh, I went to the Middle Creek uh, Community Center and uh, I saw a lot of seniors enjoying the pickleball over there. And uh, it's Apex Addresses, but they pay Cary tax, and it's really fun over there. And because there's a water treatment uh, plant over there, that's, that's why the town of Cary has already purchased that land a long time ago. But that's, it's very lucky because Cary can provide our water and filter our uh, wastewater, process everything by ourselves. So we don't have to pay to other town or other companies. That's really a huge, a great decision a couple of years ago. And uh, that slice, I think a lot of people feel very bad because they feel why we are Apex Address, but we are Cary citizens. I went there and talked to them, and they need more attention. And I think in the future, the town, we can have more events over there and feel, make the people feel uh, they belong to Cary. And also, I suggest you to go to the Middle Creek uh, Community Center. It's really fun to play pickleball.
Thank you, Bella. Renee, you have one minute.
Well, this is a complicated question because the story actually begins about 25 years ago. And at that time, Cary and many other municipalities were annexing pro, annexing pieces of county land all over the state. And at that time, the state legislature decided to stop that practice. So in the middle of acquiring all these different pieces of property, we ended up with acquisitions that were disconnected to include the property in Middle Creek where our water treatment, our largest water treatment facility is. It does make people feel disconnected. When we're out canvassing, it makes you not sure exactly whether you're in the county or in the town, depending on, depending on what's going on. In fact, I've instructed my volunteers to look at the trash cans. If they're Cary trash cans, it's Cary. It's uh, um, people in this area do live in, live in Cary, uh, live, live in Cary, pay taxes in Cary, shop in Holly Springs and have an Apex address. And we do need to do things to help this area be more connected.
Thank you, Renee. We did not have a question specifically directed to District A, but I will direct the next one to District A. What is your position regarding citizen participation in the decision on what, if anything, should be done with the town hall campus?
That's a great question.
And we're start, I'm sorry, we're starting with Brittany.
So I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of that? The town hall campus, you said?
Uh, what, if anything, should be done with the town hall campus, citizen participation?
Sure. Uh, my question to this would be the same as it's been to many of the previous questions, that I think we have a transparent and inclusive government. I think we should continue to value citizen input. Uh, I think any opportunity that citizens have for helping us shape the future of the town is valuable. Uh, that property in particular is going to, I'm sure, generate many opinions. Uh, we have many opinions already about uh, other things that have been recently developed in Cary. And so it, it takes someone who is willing to listen, build consensus, understand that that's the messy part of a democracy is, is learning how to compromise amongst many voices.
Thank you, Brittany. Jennifer, you have one minute.
Wonderful. Okay. So as we move forward with the downtown uh, development, the town hall campus is under consideration for redevelopment. It would become a mixed-use project that would have many different uses, including the government buildings. If we go through this process, we will engage citizens to the nth degree, just like we do with rezonings. With rezonings, the state law says that we have to notify people who live within 100 feet of the development. But we notify people within 800 feet. And we would do something similar with our town campus. We would give ample opportunities for citizens to come and weigh in. Of course, we'll read their emails and we'll have personal meetings with them so that we make sure that every voice is heard and that what we end up doing with town, with the town hall site will reflect the values and interests of the citizens. It'll be critically important, if we do decide to redevelop it, that we contemplate the impact on our infrastructure, most notably our roads, because that is one concern that a lot of people have about downtown Cary, is that all the development is too much for our road network, and we have not given ample attention to it.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll um, have one more audience question and then move on to closing statements. For this, we will ask this question of all candidates. Uh, we'll start this time with District C, go to at-large, and then District A. What specifically will you do to hold the property line on, will hold the line on property tax increases, especially on tax relief for seniors? And we'll start this with Renee.
Property taxes are the single largest way that we are able to raise revenue for Cary. We have very little flexibility as a council to make adjustments to that. And in order to make any kind of adjustment, such as some sort of a homestead exemption, we're gonna have to apply to the state to have additional authority locally. That's gonna be a challenge. Part of it too is how do you be fair? Can we be, how, how are we fair to the people who are not? Can we be, how, how are we fair to the people who are not eligible for that homestead exemption? But we do have people who have been here paying taxes for 40 years, some longer. And it's important for us to figure out where the balance is going to be so that our seniors are not taxed out of their homes and that we still have the beautiful, wonderful community that we all enjoy and value.
Thank you, Renee. Bella, you have one minute.
For the property tax for seniors, I really want to help them because I know they are relying on the fixed income. And I think we need to talk to the county or the state legislature, see if it is okay to give them some vouchers on food or some other kind of, to help them to, for their financial status. But the other thing is to, to help them, the other thing is how can we find more revenue resources instead of just property tax? So as a small business owner, I, I always look for different opportunities. So for, for our town, I, I know they are looking for more sports, tourism, to get more revenue. And for, as a small business, how can we attract more tech company, companies to come to Cary? And so they are, these people are working from home, and they don't harm our traffic, but they, they pay more taxes. So we need to find more innovation, innovative ways to help the, our financial situation.
Thank you, Bella. Carissa, you have one minute.
As I mentioned earlier, I did chair the work group for, for housing, for the multi-sector plan for aging, and we were discussing this at four o'clock today. And the truth is, it's very difficult to do any kind of property tax relief for seniors because the, the truth is, it has to be done in 100 counties across North Carolina equally. It can't be applied here and there, and some places can afford to do it, like a county like Wake that has a lot more resources, maybe could do a lot more than a rural county. So in order to have tax relief specifically for seniors, it really, A, the General Assembly needs to allow us to do it. We are working collaboratively with a group, we have a legislative active, legislation active group, who are actually working to try to implement these recommendations. We have eight recommendations in that plan, page 20, if you want to go read it. It, it's really challenging to sit here and look at you and want to tell you I can do it, but you know, I, I don't like to pander. I don't want to tell you what I can't do immediately, but I can tell you what I can work on and work on very feverishly over the next several years. I've committed to several more years, I've been on for three years, and I'm going to continue to pursue that and do my damnedest come hell or high water to try and make it happen.
Thank you, Carissa. Marjorie, you have one minute.
Thank you. What a council member can tell you is that they'll stop overspending. Because when you overspend, the other levers that then get triggered is that they raise property taxes, which is what has happened over the last three years. So number one, we have to have a watchdog. We need someone with a background in business, a background as an analyst, that will go in and do the hard work of looking through the money. Secondly, we also need to make sure that we are being innovative, just like that was said earlier. We need to look at revenue streams. This is what a business-minded person will tell you. There are absolutely opportunities for more revenue in our wonderful town, and we should be exploring all of those opportunities. And when it comes to our seniors, this is really, really personal. Because my mom and dad, if they have another property tax hike, like what we've been experiencing at the rate in which we're all seeing, my friends, my neighbors, I mean, I have a dear friend and neighbor who's a retired teacher, and if they, she told me, she looked me in the eye, if there's another property, property tax hike like we've had, we're going to be taxed out of our home.
Thank you.
We have to be serious about this.
Thank you, Marjorie. Jennifer, you have one minute.
Okay. Well, one thing I'd say is, first of all, there is no magic money. If we give relief to our seniors, that means everybody else is going to be paying for that. It means that our young adults who are trying to establish themselves and who are just barely able to afford their home, they're going to have higher taxes. So that's, that's the sobering reality. Bella's right, we need to go to the state and find creative and different sources of revenue. But in the meanwhile, we do things for senior citizens who are at, in a vulnerable state. For example, we have the Healthy Homes Program. If you live in a house that needs some type of infrastructure improvement to it, a new roof, replaced air conditioning, a ramp so that you can keep going into your house, we have a funding mechanism that will loan that money to you, and it's a revolving fund so that you, when you sell your property, that money can go back to Cary and be dispersed to another family, another senior citizen couple. We also have the Oasis Program that can help to free the costs of utility bills. So we do have some mechanisms to help make it more affordable.
Thank you, Jennifer. Brittany, you have one minute.
As the other candidates have noted, it really requires new authority from the General Assembly to either diversify our revenue streams or offer property tax relief. But in the meantime, I think we can find creative solutions. We need to be leveraging other levels of government grant funds, maybe even private funds. I think it's really important that we build community consensus about where we want our dollars spent. And I think any candidate that is talking about cutting taxes needs to also tell you where that money is going to come from. What services get cut? What staff gets laid off? But I want you to know that I have heard you. I am a homeowner in Cary myself. I know that the property tax increases have been tough, especially for anyone on a fixed income. And so what I am promising you is that as we look at any future property tax increases, that those increases will be reliable, reasonable, and responsible. And by reliable, I mean predictable, so that you don't have a surprise jump like we did last year with the revows. Reasonable, that they are manageable for households, and responsible in that we are investing the dollars where the community has said we want them invested.
Thank you, Brittany. That concludes the question portion of our forum. We'll now move on to closing statements. Each of the candidates will have one minute for a closing statement. I'll say a few words at the conclusion, and then we will complete our forum. We'll start with Brittany, and then move on to District C and finally our at-large candidates. Brittany, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Oh, thank you so much, everyone. This was such a pleasure to get to have this conversation with all of you. My story is a very familiar Cary story. We moved here seeking Cary's quality of life, and we found it. I feel like Cary is the hometown I was always supposed to have. I plan to be here for the rest of my life, and I'm not telling Jennifer anything she hasn't heard before. We had this conversation the very first time we met, that when I was first considering this run, when my community came to me and asked me if I would consider serving in this way, it was during a window of time when perhaps Jennifer was not going to seek reelection, and I was going to run in an open seat. And when she decided that she would like to run again, that gave me pause. Running against someone who has served so long and capably is a formidable political opponent. But I ultimately decided I wasn't running based on who I was running against. I'm not running because Jennifer is ready to step down. I'm running because I'm ready to step up. I would love to be a new voice, a fresh voice, the next generation of leadership for Cary. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Jennifer, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
All right. Thank you. I've dedicated almost half my life to serving Cary and making it a place that is easy to live in. There are so many elements of Cary that people say, I came here because I love this. And I had a hand in a lot of those. I've spearheaded or been instrumental in so many things that people love about Cary. The West Regional Library wouldn't exist if I hadn't done it. Lewis Stevens Drive wouldn't exist if I hadn't advocated for it. The intersect, I expedited Highway 55 and the widening of Davis Drive. I have been important in many of our policymaking, for example, our 100-foot stream buffers and wide sidewalks that we have all over. In the time that I've been on council, we have added 200, excuse me, 2,365 acres of public open space. We've added 5,311 acres of private open space, and that's mostly through policymaking. We have added 30 parks. We've added 97 miles of greenways, and that was because of a policy change that I recommended. There are so many aspects that you love about Cary that I had a hand in. If you trust the work that I've done, I ask you to support me again so that I can help our town navigate the complex financial challenges that we have before us.
Thank you, Jennifer. Bella, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you, everyone, tonight, for being here to listen our, this forum. And I think I chose Cary to be my home, and I think the most important is the people of Cary, who use their hands and their hearts to build Cary today. And we love Cary so much. And as a mother, I want my children to have a sustainable future, so we'll, I'll keep investing, protect our environment. And as a small business owner, I will support a strong community by empowering our economy. And as an Asian, and as now it's so diverse community in Cary, I will support a vibrant town. So I'm a listener, and also I'm a learner. I have learned so much from these amazing women, and I'm sure I can learn from you, too. I'm looking forward to hear from you. Your suggestions is my priority. So feel free to contact me, and I, we want to build our home Cary together. Thank you. I humbly ask for your support, and hopefully I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bella. Renee, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
I come from a family where I have a legacy of service. My great-grandparents, grandparents, and my parents served their communities in, in many, many ways. My mother especially, who was both a county commissioner in Pennsylvania County and then a member of the General Assembly here in North Carolina. That legacy of service is all about one small thing, that you take care of the place you live, and you leave it better than you found it. When I found Cary 15 years ago, I started right then getting involved in what was going on downtown, then the Imagine Cary Project, and finally ending on the, on the Greenway Committee where I sit today. I've spent more time than any candidate on this stage who is not a council member in council meetings and speaking to our council and addressing issues there. I am well-qualified to sit on the Cary Town Council, and I ask for your vote. If you choose to, you can learn more about me at votereenemiller.com.
Thank you, Renee. Marjorie, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
Great. Well, during my opening statement, I talked about being a citizen member of the Economic Development Committee. And it was that moment, you know, through all of those sessions, where it's, it was like, you know, walking by your kitchen, and you see a fire on the stove top. You're not just going to keep going and walking to your bedroom or the garage, you need to go put that fire out. And the way to put the fire out is I've got to be inside the house. We have a problem right now with our financials. So as a person with a background in business, as a person that's very comfortable to look through hard things, my son said it so well, you know, when we do math in, during the weeknights, and if there's a tough math problem, he goes, Mom, the math doesn't math. Well, the math does not math right now with what's going on with our financials. I want to be that person for you. I want to be your voice. I have a background in discipline that will be used from my military time and collaboration, and I'd love to earn your vote as the Cary Town Council at-large.
Thank you, Marjorie. Carissa, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you. This is the part that I'm uncomfortable with, I'll be honest with you. I'm sitting here, I'm so proud to represent folks here in Cary. Honestly, there's not a lot in it for me, right? I don't like being the center of attention. I always joke that I'm a vice chair type. I like to do a lot more than I like to be looked at and heard, you know, in the way that, this is very vulnerable. But it's really necessary because I am literally living, living the American dream. I am living here in downtown Cary. My home is going to be paid off in the next 10 years. I, we grew up, four kids in a bunk bed, you know? This is, this is paradise to me. I will do whatever it takes to serve my community. I serve locally. I've been on multiple boards and commissions for the town of Cary. I serve at the county level, level as a volunteer guardian ad litem for children petitioned into foster care, and I serve you at the state level, working on our multi-sector plan for aging. I don't like telling you that. It feels weird because that's not why I'm doing it. But I want you to understand that when I ask you to please let me continue to work for you, I want you to understand what I prioritize. And I hope you'll give me an opportunity to continue to work for you because I owe it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa. This concludes our candidate forum for the 2025 Cary Town Council race. Could you go to the final slide, please? We invite all of you to visit our vote411.org website, where you will find not only unedited candidate comments, but also important election information. The questionnaires completed by candidates will be live on vote411.org on October 15th. We invite you to visit both vote411.org and our league website, L W V Wake.org, for information on issues, elections, and candidates to help you make informed decisions. And candidates, if you have not already done so, we hope you will respond to the vote411.org questionnaire. Just another reminder, Election Day is November 4th. Early voting begins at the Cary location on October the 25th and will run the week through November 1st. Candidates will be here after the forum for a few minutes if you would like to speak with them. The league and our cosponsors, as you saw when you came in, have tables set up outside if you would like more information about one of our organizations. We invite you to pick up materials, talk to representatives, and join us. Thank you all so much for attending.
Let's hear it for Gail.